Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, April 18th, 2019 edition of the Auburn Zoning and Wolf Appeals. So I'm going to call the meeting to order at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by a local access program. Is there anyone here presently that is recording the meeting? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. So at this time, I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. And our first item on the agenda this evening is a 7:00 PM applicant, A.B.P. Incorporated Troy's Sports Bar requesting a special permit to extend the existing nonconforming use under Section 8.2.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow for the construction and use of a new outside deck on property located at 125 Oxford Street, Auburn, Mass., MAP 10, partial 82. Is the applicant present?
Counsel for Attorney David Silverman. I do expect Mr. Troy here up, and he's walking in right now.
Okay. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So if you'd like to just introduce yourself, go over an overview of what you'd like to accomplish tonight, and we'll take it from there.
Sure. Attorney David Silverman, counsel for the applicant. David Troy is here. He's pulling a chair up now.
We're a little cramped in this room tonight, so I apologize.
And we have Jay Finley, the engineer. Briefly, it's a variance to put up a deck. It's the first step. There's going to be a few steps needed. I believe that a special permit and site plan approval would be required for further steps. Wanted to take one step at a time. I believe that everyone has plans. If not, I can certainly pass around these beautifully colored plans.
Okay. I can share here.
Yep.
The reason for coming before you is, you may know, the building which has been there for ages and ages is about a foot off the lot line. In some 30 feet or so off the curb line, I think maybe 33 feet. The deck that's proposed is 12.9 feet off the lot line, so it's about 12 feet back from the front of the house, but nonetheless within the front yard setback requirement, which frankly with all of the properties up and down that street, they've been there since, pardon the expression, Methuselah was a teenager. And it makes sense to allow a little bit of leeway here simply because these properties have been there for ages. This is a business and has been a business for...
19 years.
Well, no, you've been 19 years, but...
Over 100 years.
So just...
1923, it's cool, is what it says.
So it's been a business for that long. It's located in a beautiful area, and Mr. Troy is looking to try to make use of the beautiful nature of the lake across the street to put up a deck so people can have a bite to eat, maybe a drink, on the deck and just enjoy the area. I saw, I believe, there was a letter that was submitted to the board raising a couple of concerns. So if I, if, Mr. Chairman, you're okay, I can just quickly address those.
Absolutely.
There's going to be no live music. There may be a couple of TVs. The deck itself will close down by 10...
By 10:00. The latest, very late.
They're going to have, I don't want to say enclosures on the deck, but essentially enclosures on the deck, sides to the deck, if you will. So there really wouldn't be any issue of noise bothering anyone. The closest house is at least a few hundred feet south of the property, and the lot itself is just over two acres, so no one is really going to be bothered by any of the activity on there. This is really just trying to take a building that's been there forever and to try to maximize the use of it in conjunction with the beauty of the area.
Okay. Normally, I would open it up to the members of the board, but I see we probably have some of the butters here, and usually refrain, so would you prefer you go with the butters first?
Yeah.
Do we have any of the butters present that would like to speak this evening? None? Okay. So that's pretty good. Actually, is that the crowd?
I know.
Yes, sir. If you could just speak up. This is the only microphone we have. I'm not really sure how it carries.
Sure. I'm just curious, how large is the deck going to be?
I'll defer to the engineer, if I may.
Yeah, that's actually probably good, I guess.
The deck is 43 and 1/2 feet long by 16 feet wide.
Okay.
Fairly good size.
Yep. Do you have an estimate on how many patrons that might hold with tables?
I think if you refer to your architectural plans, they show some tables on that plan.
Their seating capacity is listed as 46.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Any other concerns from the butters? Yes, sir?
You also said no live music. How about some kind of radio pumping in?
Mainly a TV.
TV sports or whatever.
Keynote TV and maybe a sports TV, nothing major, nothing, not going to be live, no music, no...
Have you seen, if I may through the chair...
Is this all the graded out area?
Have you seen a copy of the plan?
I have not, no.
If any of the butters would like to come up, so you have to be careful about...
I live around the corner on Vidal Street.
No, if you all see a copy of the plan.
Oh, yeah, you can come up and take a look, please, feel free. If you could just introduce yourself and give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Tim Duffy. I'm on 8 Vidal Street. My backyard overlooks, I think, where all this is going.
All right, so...
This is the Duffy property over here.
Yep. It will be on the opposite side.
So this would be the parking area. I was thinking the deck was going way back here.
Oh, no, 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 no. It's going right here, so it's going to be, it will be set back 12.9 feet, so a lot further back than the front of the property. And this is the curb line, right here, and obviously the street.
So I'm sorry, this is the existing property, or that's where the deck's going to be?
No, no, no. I'm sorry, the deck is what is shaded in red.
It's going to be to the right of it. Okay. All right, I was just curious, because there looks like no room right here on this side.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
Okay, on the other side.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer them?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Any other butters present that would like to speak? Okay, none?
Kennedy.
I'm sorry?
Is that Kennedy?
He did do that, yes. All right, so we'll go around as we usually do. Mr. Cusi, you have any questions or concerns?
I don't right now.
Okay. Mr. Chacolo?
I don't right now. I want to say that I moved the property today, and the closest dwelling is Mr. Troy's dwelling himself. That's the closest neighborhood dwelling.
Okay.
His own house.
Okay.
Is that the one on the same lot?
Correct. And the actual sports bar is a fantastic buffer to anybody else that is living next to the property.
Okay. You mean the residence is a buffer for the other residence?
No. The bar is a buffer for another residence, okay? And then his residence is behind the bar, as you're looking at it from the street, so that I don't see any issues with any neighborhood.
Ms. Roach?
Um, no, I'm good.
Okay. Ms. Place?
Yes, I have a question. The seating that you have on there, is that permanent seating going to be built in, or are you going to be able to move it?
No, the architect just put that in there. It's open for, nothing, no seating, just whatever.
So the seats can be moved around? Is what you're asking?
Mm-hmm. Yes, exactly. No permanent seating, it's just where it fits in, so...
Where are you going to, so like, just throw some tables and chairs up there? Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Jones? Thanks. So if you were to set the deck back 20 feet from the road, reducing it to just 36 and 1/2 feet wide, would that, would that be work? Would that work for the business? Would that be any less viable for the business?
I think it may create a problem internally where there would have to be a lot more construction inside the building so that there could be, there could be access and egress in, to the inside of the bar and to the deck. So I think it was structured that way so that, David, maybe you can speak to this. I think you were looking to do the doorway where that little jog goes on?
It goes further. I explained to Jones, it's going to go with a little to the right of that, that drawing, to the right with the main window right there. That's going to go up and through the deck.
Is that where you noted, remove existing window and add new door?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But that appears to be more than 12 feet back from where the front of the deck is.
Well, it would, it would create certainly a much smaller deck, and it was thought that 12.9 feet, you know, gives, yes, it's a, it's a good sized deck, but yet it also allows it to be set back substantially from where the front of the building actually is.
My inquiry is really just about the, you know, the ability to comply with that 20-foot setback, and I'm looking at, by my estimate, you'd lose a deuce and a six-top at the front of the deck, but the rest of it would be fine. Is there any reason why keeping that seating would be necessary for the implementation of the plan?
No, that's not necessary. Would the stairs come down? Is that what you want? Would the stairs come down from the upstairs apartment?
It's unclear to me what else is on that left side of the diagram other than the...
If I might, Mr. Chair? If I might answer Mr. Jones's question. Where that door is going to go in, if you look, if you're inside, looking out, it's a natural break for it.
Right.
Okay? The inside is not a perfect rectangle, and that creates a natural break for it. And I understand that, you know, we've got 7.9 feet here to worry about, but if you look at the front of the existing bar, right, right about where that 42, 42-inch, I'm looking at the plans that are underneath, yeah, right about at that point is the front. And where this new door is, I thought it was going to be further back, but it was explained to me this afternoon that that window that was there is going to be taken out, and that creates a natural break.
I think the 20-foot line is right about where the rear supports for that second-floor landing are. That appears to be about, because it's six feet from post to post?
Right.
So it seems like seven feet back would be, so...
Yeah, it's a little further forward than that, but that, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, so it seems to be just an issue of seating rather than issue of, you know, entry and egress with the building.
Well, I can tell you that aesthetically, when I look at my deck that is about the same size, and then I start putting people on it, it becomes awful small awful quick.
It does fill up fast.
Yes. So it certainly would turn from a 46-person deck to a 36, 38-person.
You're not going to put 46 people on the deck.
Okay. The diagram suggests 46 seated.
Yeah. But what the diagram says, I know mine is the same size, and you're not going to put 46 people on it.
If I may, through the chair, Mr. Jones, I think once the matter goes to site plan, I think that that number will quickly be whittled down by the planning board. I don't really think that there's going to be, you know, 46 people.
Okay. Yeah, it's more the area that I'm inquiring about.
It's kind of in an area where the deck is at its widest. You can see that the existing building jogs in, so on the easterly side of the deck, it's 16 feet. On the westerly side of the deck, it's 20 and 1/2 feet. So to lose seven feet in that area of greater width, they're going to lose somewhere about 150 square feet of seating. So it's in an area where the deck's at its widest. So to lose it there, you're going to lose quite a bit of square footage. So they're gaining a bunch of square footage in that setback that we're asking for the variance to.
And while the applicant is, he's not looking to put the deck right up to the front of the, of the bar itself. So he's not looking to really push the envelope very much. A little bit, but, you know, as the old saying goes, a pig is a pig until a pig becomes a hog. He's not looking to be a hog here.
My question would be, so I'm referring to the last page of the plans here that you submitted to us. I see the stairway going down. You said that's for the egress to the apartment above? Is that correct?
Yes. Are you talking about the stairway that goes down to the, to the front of the building?
Yes.
Yes, that's pre-existing, that's access and egress to the second floor.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And how are we affecting the parking in the area? So I know we're going to be taking X amount of spaces, but I think that lot should be able to manage that, correct? Right? It's a pretty, it's a pretty big lot.
Losing about four spaces, if that, not even four spaces.
Yeah, I think whatever you may have lost, you're going to gain back in spaces 1 through 6.
Right.
So, you know, you've got the proper aisle width of 24 feet, and you've got parking on the other side. So everything in the light blue here is existing pavement, and what's shown here in kind of purple is an existing gravel parking area. So we're not proposing to expand the parking area at all?
Sure. I would just concern with making sure we had adequate parking. So that's fine, okay.
About the parking table.
My only last question, Caleb. With this deck design as it currently stands, and I'm just asking for fire safety purposes and evacuation purposes, would this require a means of egress off of the deck to the parking lot? I just don't see it on this particular plan, so I'd like to have it pointed out.
Do you have any egress?
There will be egress.
So, oh, I see, so that's going to be a dual there with that?
It's one way out. You can't get in from that.
Right, exactly.
It's going to be alarm, like a, you know, alarm.
Right, I just wanted to point that out. I saw that originally, we talked about that was going to be the existing egress from the apartment above, but also that's going to be tied in.
No, they're separate.
Okay, they are separate.
They're separate, yeah.
Okay.
The second floor empties out to the front of the building.
Right, this, so I wasn't referring to those here. I was referring to the ones to the right side of this plan that's submitted.
Yes.
Okay, so...
At the back end of the proposed deck.
Right.
Now, now we're clear, okay.
I guess my only comment on that would be, I'm not sure how the ABCC would react to that stairway, and how the fire department is going to work that out, since the ABCC's not going to want that to be an egress, they're going to want it to be an exit only.
Right.
It will be.
Yeah, it's not going to be for access, it'll be for egress.
Outside alarm, if you hit that button, it's going to go off.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, that's the concern. We don't want anybody sneaking in the back door, so to speak. And I know that's not the, it's not necessarily the charge of the board, but as a citizen of the town also, I have that concern. So as long as it's clear, we pointed it out. Okay. Any other further questions, Ms. Roach?
You said, so 10:00 is your latest point?
Pretty latest, yeah, absolutely.
And it will obviously be lit, but at 10:00, the lights will go out.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. That's all it's going to be then.
And do you currently serve food?
Not, not, not right now, but we're going that way.
Okay.
After this is done, we're trying to get some, just finger food type, you know, nothing crazy, just appetizers, you know, that type of thing.
Okay.
That's everything.
And Mr. Jones, I'm sorry, you had one more?
Sure. I think that food service is a great idea, and I think that should, you know, benefit the neighborhood.
Absolutely, yeah.
Serving more than just beverages. My final question is, could you achieve the same square footage on the deck just by making it wider and still complying with the 20-foot setback?
You'd lose, you'd lose, I think, too many parking spots.
Okay. You wouldn't be able to put those parking spots within the 20-foot setback area?
I think that the parking spots we'd lose, you can see, we have standard-sized parking up against the deck.
Two, three, four, and five.
Right, we have minimal aisle width, and then we have standard and minimal parking over here, and at the backside of the pavement, this slope goes down pretty steep to the stream. So without, we don't, we don't plan to expand the parking area at all. It works within itself right now. To widen that deck, we'd push everything this way, we're going to lose parking, we're going to have to get into doing some work over here, which is not going to work in this area of the pavians. You might be able to push it out a little bit here to the top of slope, but it's...
But pretty soon, you're parking in a stream, right?
That's, so in our opinion anyways, it's better to leave the parking as is and not expand the imperviousness any closer to the stream. We're going to be going to conservation and obviously site plan approval, so we'd rather not expand it towards the stream.
Do I have any other questions of the board?
No.
No, okay. Do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Through the chair, I think somebody did come in late. I don't know if they're in a bar.
Are you, is there any other butters that may want to comment or speak on this hearing?
On this one?
Nope. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, though. Okay, so I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Close.
Second in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I think we've probably discussed it enough, so we have a motion on the 7:00 PM application?
I make a motion to grant relief from 8.3.2. Through the chair, if I may.
You may.
The applicant applied for a special permit under 8.2.3, which is to extend existing nonconforming use. They did not apply for the variance.
Okay.
Public hearing's been advertised. I guess it would be up to the board whether they wanted to amend the application on the floor to include the variance.
You want to just read the particular part of the variance that we're speaking of so we have it for the record?
They're going to need a variance from Section 5.4 by law for the front setback requirement.
So we have, if we choose to amend, we have a special permit to extend the existing nonconforming use, and then we'll have a variance under Section 5.4, so it would take those votes separately for the record. But before I even begin that, do I have a motion to amend the application to include the Section 5.4, to include the variance in the application?
I'll make that motion to amend the current application to include a 5.4 request for a variance.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Cusi, anyone in favor of amending?
Favor.
Favor.
Okay. Yep, I got you. And I say in favor. So I think, since we're here, we've heard all the concerns, we'll make sure that we just move forward with that. So we're going to have two separate votes, again, as I said, a special permit to extend the nonconforming use under Section 8.2.3. Do I have a motion to approve or deny?
You're taking my first motion?
Well, we're going to redo it.
Okay.
Because we had to go back and amend for the 5.4.
All right. So what do we...
We're looking right now, again, we're going to go to the 8.2.3.
Okay, do you want a motion on that?
I do, I want a second motion on that, yes, just for clarity.
I'll make a motion to grant a special permit, 832...
823, excuse me.
823?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, 823. To grant relief from the front setback.
Okay. Do I have a second?
No, the motion would be, through the chair, the motion would be...
This is for the nonconforming.
Extending existing nonconforming use under Section 8.2.3.
Right.
This one's for the special permit.
Okay, so for the record, Mr. Chacolo has made a motion to approve under Section 8.2.3 to extend the existing nonconforming use of this particular part of the permit.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a second from Ms. Place. Mr. Cusi?
Favor.
Ms. Roach?
I'll approve.
Okay, so the only, I would like to add a condition that, since you mentioned it already, closes by 10:00 PM, and then it just meets all required code safety regulations as set forth by the Department of Special Services.
Through the chair, if I may, I'd recommend standard conditions for special permit. The time would be, the time would be looked at and governed by the planning board on the site plan.
Gotcha. Okay. I wasn't sure if that fell in the site plan or not, so...
I would recommend a condition for approval by the ABCC.
All right, so as stated, from the Department of Special Services, we're going to have all standard conditions applied to the special permit and ensure that the means of egress or other requirements are accepted by the ABCC.
If I might, through the chair, sorry, I also would want the, no music to be put in there. That's what they said, and...
No live music.
I don't want bands coming next week.
Okay, that's fine. So the second one now, we're going to go on to the variance, Section 5.4. Do I have a motion on Section 5.4 for the variance?
So I'll make a...
That's the setback.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance under Section 5.4 for the size of the deck for the setback.
Correct.
That's what they need, the variance.
That's what we need, the variance, all right, okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
You may.
Would, or should the vote specify the, the number of feet of relief?
It certainly can.
It should include the amount of relief.
I'll amend the motion to be to show 7...
27.1, if I may.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll shut for the record.
Standard amended, I will.
Yeah, would you please? So we're going to include the amount of 7.1 feet in the decision?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so 7:00 PM applicant, you're all set. Congratulations, good luck. I'm sure you have to go through many more steps in the process.
Sure.
Will you add only the first?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I greatly appreciate your involvement.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, we'll let them clear up, it's about 7:10.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move on to the 7:10 PM applicant, Ray Bonneville, requesting a variance to the Section 5.3.2.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow relief from a frontage requirement of a hammerhead lot for the construction of a single-family dwelling on property located at 23 Sunrise Avenue, Auburn, Mass., MAP 8, partial 12. I'm sure the applicant is present. Can you introduce yourself, sir, and go over what you'd like to try to accomplish? Well... Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Let's open.
All in favor? All in favor? Okay.
So, the honorable chair, members, my name is Ray Bonneville. I've been living in Auburn for 20 years. I built my home here on 23 Sunrise Avenue, and what I like to do is build a single-family home here for my daughter. The whole family's on the street now, if this, if we could see a way of trying to get this I do have 20 feet that goes alongside the road of Sunrise Avenue, and the width of the road is 40 feet. Now, there won't be another house put on this street. This would be the last house that's put on this street. There are two hammerhead lots already on the street. One was approved in 2004, and one was approved in 2012. If we go down to the end, okay, that's what, I would like to say that, I would like to count that as being frontage. I know there are some laws, this is, that it can't be counted for, but it is a dead-end road, it is the last house on the street, and it does, and it does meet a lot of the requirements for a buildable lot. It, I would be cutting out an acre and a half, I believe, for the, for my home residence, and leaving the 10-acre partial to be subdivided to put up another house. I'm looking at relief for, for that, on the fact, too, Chair, is that, members, I don't have the money to pave this road. It's 1,800 feet long, and there's no way that I could come up with the funds to pave it. The, the other thing is, is I did have another opportunity to develop it. I'm here before you today because I don't want to develop it. I live here, I, I just want one home, like I said, for my daughter, and that's it. Considering the, the acre partial, I'm looking to have the board approve this.
Okay, do we have a butth士 present for this hearing? Okay, hearing, I'm seeing that.
To the chair, please?
Yeah.
I spoke to everybody on my street.
Mm-hmm.
We're a very close family on that street. They don't want a development there either.
How big is the overall lot itself?
12.5.
Okay.
Almost.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
241,985 square feet.
Plus the 60, right? Plus that's about it.
I believe it's already subdivided. Is this, I believe in your brief, it was, this was already subdivided?
No, it was not.
It is not?
It is not.
Okay.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for, that's what I want to do.
Okay, so, this lot here, one...
Mr. Cussie, yes, please, go ahead.
Lot one is your house.
Correct. And I've been there, like I said, I've been there for 20 years. I built that house.
If I may, through the chair?
Yes.
So, the applicant would need a special permit through the planning board for a hammerhead lot?
Mm-hmm.
He's here before you, asking for a variance from 5.3.2.1, which states that each hammerhead lot must have a minimum of 50 feet of frontage on an accepted town road?
Mm-hmm.
And have a minimum lot width of 50 feet. So, that's why he's here before you.
Right.
He would need that variance to go before planning for the special permit.
Yeah, so, you have the frontage with it, it's a private road.
He has 20 feet of frontage, you can't count the end of the road because the person on the other side of that road has rights to half of that.
Mm-hmm.
So, this case law, to support that you can't count the end of a road as your frontage?
So, would case law, would case law allow him 20 feet of that?
Well, he does have 20 feet of frontage, so he'd need it.
No, of the road, to the middle of the road. Case law give him that 20 feet?
If I may, I own the whole road. That property belongs to me.
The road itself?
The road itself.
And that, but that is non-accepted town road, correct?
Exactly, but the whole road does belong to me.
I have the case law, it's 15.
But he, but, if, if the road was 10 feet further back this way, my neighbor would own 20 feet of that road, and I would own the other 20, correct?
You both have, you both have rights to the roadway.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
But the entire road is on your land?
Yeah.
So, I agree with what you're saying, I'm just trying to clarify, you know, I know that they both have rights to the road, but, okay...
But, but somebody else owns the other side of it.
No, not, if 10 feet back from, just 20 feet back, yes. If you, you would have to go back from the state that's there, but all of, all of that road right there, along that frontage, is all mine.
So, you own on the south side as well as on the north side of the unaccepted road?
They, yeah, this side of 40 feet is all my property.
I got you, okay.
All of that belongs to me.
So, you, you have 20 feet of frontage on the side of it?
Correct.
And then you want to also count 20?
40 feet there, and that's, like I said, that's the last house that's ever going to be put there. There is no, there, there is, let's face it, there, if we make this a development, it would change the whole dynamics of this. This is the closest to heaven as anyone's going to ever get. I don't know if you guys have ever been there? It's beautiful there. And I, and I'll tell you, my children love it here. It's just a wonderful place to keep nature there.
Mm-hmm.
We see deer, we see bear, bobcats, it's everything. My dog's constantly going crazy.
Through the chair, if I might ask a question. If, who determined the end of this road?
It was George Montoris.
And who was?
He was the actual, he was, he actually got it from Ray Dumont. Ray Dumont, going back...
He was not an engineer or anything?
No, no. The original engineer that did this was DeBois, way, 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 way back, and then my engineer that I hired, that made this plan, which is Burton Engineering, there was a dispute of where that last state was going to be, and everything got clarified once the engineers got together and said, oh, listen, this can go to court, and then all of a sudden, everybody wanted to come up with a solution.
Okay.
Really fast.
The end of this road?
Yep.
When I pulled into your driveway today?
Okay.
And I backed in, I was backing in over the end of the road. I backed, I pulled up, and then I backed.
Yes.
So, I was backing in over the end of the road.
Yes.
You have a pile of gravel, road trimmings at the beginning of the road.
Exactly, yep.
If you extended this road, if it's not a town-accepted road, if you extended this road 40 feet with the material that you've got there, you would be establishing a 60-foot road frontage.
Exactly, but that would be under the control, subdivision control laws, right?
You're not establishing a subdivision.
No.
You're extending a road, which is not a town-accepted road, so I'll call it, for the sake of convenience, I'm going to call it a cart path, because that's basically all it is.
Exactly.
And you're doing that yourself with your own material.
Exactly.
On your own land.
Right.
So, to extend that 40 feet, you have to meet the town criteria?
No, it's not a town-accepted road.
So, you can just gravel it and pave it?
Yes, he could gravel it, and he has, he has trimmings from a grinding, a road grinding.
Yeah, because the road's not paved.
Right, a road grindings.
Yep.
That's all you have for a road right now.
Exactly.
I see Ms. Roach deep in research, yes, I'm going to...
She'll look at just to use the 20 feet, run a driveway right off the 20 feet.
I could, yes, I could do that.
I'm looking to come this way.
Right.
I backed, I pulled up, and I backed in this way, and then drove out.
Right, so, see the 20 feet here?
That's right.
That's what's existed.
And that's what I want to do. That's what I suggested to him, that gives him 60 feet of frontage.
Yeah. Sorry, 60? Count, are you counting the, the?
Counting the 20 he's got now.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm going to go, I'm suggesting that he just extends his cart path, and I'm choosing the words, obviously, why I'm choosing them. He extends his cart path, 20 feet, 40 feet, 50 feet, he can extend it. It's his land, it's not a town-accepted road, be the same thing as him putting a, a path out into the woods.
Through the chair, could I ask, who maintains the road?
Absolutely. Who does maintain the road?
Lester.
Lester Highway Department?
They plow it, too.
Hmm, now that makes it interesting.
Listen, to the chair, we're, to be totally honest with you, we're the lost street of Auburn.
Right.
We know it, everybody knows it.
Yep.
The thing is, is this, is that, is that I plow it, I'm the last one, I come out, my kids got to get in anyway, they only have regular four-wheel-drive, two-wheel-drive vehicles, so I do as much work to this road as, as, as needed.
Mm-hmm.
I do plow it, the town of Auburn does come, we give Bill a call when it's really needed, we only have $500 a year on the budget for that, and, again, everybody helps out on the street.
Sure.
We all know when to pull over, if you came down my house, you know there was another car coming. We have rights, we, we put place, places where people can park while another car goes over.
Pull over, yep.
You know, show some courtesy of everybody on the street. But there are 12 houses on this street. I know every one of them, and every one of them knows me.
Mm-hmm.
They, I talk to everybody about it, I plow everybody's driveway during the winter, so we all, we all get along, and believe it or not, my brother-in-law lives in the next house across from me. His, his, he has a relative that lives on the side of him. Everyone else on the street, we've all known each other, there's very rarely a house for sale on that street. Everybody that's been living there has been living there for like 15 years or more. There's even been, there's even some folks that have been there longer than me. But, again, we don't want to make this a whole big project if we don't have to.
Mm-hmm.
We're just looking, I'm just looking for one, and like I said, it would be the last one on this street. There would be one heck of an expense to really put a subdivision in here.
Sure.
Not to say that it can't happen, but as long as I'm there, and my kids are going to grow up there, this, this will never happen. I am trying to stop it, okay? A lot of, a lot of the engineers that looked at the plan, that designed this plan, the first plan I got, boom, put a, put a cul-de-sac here.
Mm-hmm.
Ray, you're a millionaire. I says, no. I says, I don't, I only want one, and that's it, that's, that's all this lot we'll ever see. And if, if, if anyone has gone up there, you'd see why just one would work.
Mm-hmm.
And, again, I would like to say, my daughter can be there. She's great, I got great kids. One's a, one's a contractor, the other one's a nurse. The other one, I just want to wring his neck. But you always got that one out of, one out of the bunch. But that's what I'm asking for, relief of, just to be able to put one there.
Okay.
I still have to go back to the planning board, they have, they had told me that there's going to be some ideas that they're going to approach me with.
Sure.
But this is where I start. Folks, if you say no, it ends here. I don't even have to go back.
So, I'd just like to kind of clarify what Mr. Chacolo was speaking of. Caleb, would you agree that if he did, in fact, with his private property, extended that area to require the frontage, it would be adequate?
No, I respectfully disagree.
Okay.
You can't extend a road onto private property.
It's not a road, it's... I'm just asking because the road's not accepted by the town, that's what really I'm trying to clear it up.
The bylaw states that he needs a variance because he doesn't have 50 feet on an accepted town road.
That's right.
It's still a paper road at this point, is it not?
It's, I don't know whether it's private or public, but it's, it's a roadway. Doesn't meet town road standards. The bylaw says that he has to meet town law, town road standards for 50 feet of frontage.
That would be a sticking point to me, because it is, it's not a town road, but the only reason it's there for the few feet past his own driveway is because he did it. And it's, and it's, if you went there, it's the same road. It's got road trimmings from grinding up a road right there, and that's, that is the road.
On a map, is, on a map, is there, there a length of this road? Does the road start and end on a town map?
I couldn't say what the length of the roadway was.
Ms. Roach, do you have something you want to add? I saw you reading some paperwork over there.
Um...
Bless your worship. Bless your worship.
Thank you.
Is that allergy season?
Just the last one you get. Bless your worship. Thank you.
I'd need more, anyway.
My understanding of the case law, that Caleb brought, indicates that the, the 40-foot cap of the road doesn't count as frontage.
Right.
So, if, if you had land that only abutted that 40-foot cap, you'd have no frontage whatsoever, and I think that's what this case...
Nobody is arguing that point, though. He's got 20 feet.
There's still 20 feet.
He still has 20.
There's still access to it, you know?
20 feet. My suggestion was, create the 50 feet.
Where? But the law says you can't.
Case law says you can't count the end of the road.
Okay, there's, nobody has read case law that would prove that to me.
Says it right here. Real estate located at the end of the way, just not abut the way for purposes, therefore carries no fee ownership of the way. So, just because his property borders that, does not mean he can...
That's not, that's not what I'm saying.
Consider it his.
I'm not considering that 40 feet his. I'm saying, give the 40 feet away, don't even count it. Create the 50 feet. His road comes up and goes to his house, his driveway goes up, and the road bends to the right.
20 feet.
I backed on the road today.
I think Mr. Chacolo does have a solution here, but it would involve getting the town to accept the 20, you know, the 20 feet, and then another 30 feet past it.
They haven't accepted the whole road. They haven't accepted the whole road.
Right, but they would have to in order for us to count it frontage.
That is a sticking point. That is definitely a sticking point.
Now, excuse me, does that law that you just read, right?
Well, it's not a law, it's case law.
Now, does that mean that was the case law because it was a town-accepted road? Because it's a town-accepted road?
No.
This would mean, this would say, no, you cannot use this, but I have looked on the internet to see if this would be accepted on a private road. A lot of the laws that are being read to me, dictated, I had not questioned them, but I didn't know about them.
Mm-hmm.
So, I went online, and I read as much as I could, I asked some of my engineers that they don't have the questions to either, but if it was a private road, would it still be the same? Caleb, anyone?
I don't know about that.
Because it's saying, a town-accepted road would have to, they will not accept this, but as long as there's access to the property, to the property, and it's a...
Private road.
Yeah, private, private road, it would have some use.
I suspect the town road acceptance process involves addressing concerns raised in 9.3.5.2 of the bylaws, which talk about the capability of the town to serve the premises considering existing roads, town equipment, and other municipal services.
Exactly.
So, if you have another house there, then you have additional need for fire trucks, ambulances, you know, town services reaching residents.
Exactly.
At the end of a dirt road, which I think might be narrow, I'm not sure, might not, maybe not allow for...
Well, that's what we were discussing with the building, with the, with the planning board, because the, excuse me, Bill Coyle is aware of this situation. His, they don't pull in like you do, like you did. If you look to the right, I have ruts this deep from even the town of Lester, because, let's face it, guys, this road is not 40 feet wide, nowhere near it. But when I went to the town planning board, that's going to be addressed. That's one of the things that Bill wants to take care of.
That would, that would end up having to appear on a town meeting, and be voted on in a town meeting, we've done that already at town meetings, and it would have had to have been on the docket for the May meeting coming up, but we've already done that in at least two instances, I believe, where we have accepted a road that was private, it met all the criteria naturally, and we accepted it as a town-owned road.
Mm-hmm.
We had discussion as to whether we wanted a turnaround for fire apparatus or anything like that.
I do recall that particular meeting.
Yeah.
Hmm?
But to get the road, um, to jump from a private to a town road and be serviced by the town, I know we voted on a couple of town meetings regarding it.
Mm-hmm. Does the cost go to the town or not?
Like if they're gonna accept it as a town road?
Yes.
Yes, the town will.
There was a cost associated with it.
Through the chair, if I may, I've had conversations with the town engineer. The town engineer is actually the one that provided the case law to me. Um, he has no intention of accepting this in its current state.
Mm-hmm.
It would need to be, the Auburn portion of the road would need to be brought up to town road standards for it to be accepted.
And who does that? Who pays for that?
Anybody who wishes to develop it.
Right, so we'll be the developer. So say for instance, we've had developments in town where they cut a road in, they use just like the basic blacktop first, they build all the houses, they put the curbs and everything in, they do the finish work, and then they turn it over to the town after that.
The town accepts it.
Then the town accepts it as a standard road and will maintain it from that point forward.
To the chair, the members, that could never happen.
Right.
And the reason why that can never happen is, as you know, anybody ever drive down that street, these houses were put here. You put forty feet there, you're gonna be right at their doorstep.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I don't, that's the hardship that we're up against. We can't pave it. And if we did pave it, it would have to be to what the roadside is. And having to have, to take people's frontage away, oh boy, I'll tell ya, they ain't gonna like me much. They ain't gonna like anyone else who does it.
Mm-hmm.
With the road being forty feet, um, I could tell you a little story, a little history about this road. Back in two thousand and ten, we had a developer come in, get approval to build some lots. He's the one that got this one right here to be broken up, which is a hammerhead. And there's another hammerhead down further, okay? He was supposed to put in six homes and pave the road and widening it and everything. Um, he had never done it once he was done with the road. Uh, with the homes.
Mm-hmm.
He fixed the road one time. The board members, they did come. They, they liked what they saw. And if you went today, just a couple of days ago, I ran my bulldozer down the road, it was really nice to go over. Um, once he was done, he never paved the road. And the town swore that he would never be able to build in the, in the town of Auburn again. He had a lot of promises that he had, he had, he had said he was going to do and never did.
But he should've never got the hammerheads to begin with because it's a private.
Not only that, he should've never allowed them to put the houses in before he built to put the road in. That's what the problem was. Um, he was granted a whole lot of things to do that, um, once the success was done and the homes were already livable and sold and everything, kinda like took the money and ran. Um, but as, but as this right here, um, to the chair and members, I, I think twenty feet is good. It's, 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 it serves a good purpose of getting in and out of this lot without hurting anyone.
I think that, um, if I might, I think that what we're doing here is trying to make half of something work. In other words, we're saying it's a private road, he can do what he, I'm saying, it's a private road, he can do what he wants. But we're trying to make him conform to an Auburn zoning bylaw that is dictating, part of that by, dict, bylaw dictates that he has to be on a public road.
An accepted road, right?
But it's a private road. So that, I think that, uh, what you can do on your own land on a private road, I think maybe that has to be, uh, gavel has to come down on just what you can do on a private road. And can I, can you on a private road force somebody to adhere to a zoning bylaw that one of the conditions is it becomes, it's on a public road? So maybe the gavel has to come down on a ruling just what, what rules, regulations, or non-rules and regulations he has to abide by. In other words, is it public? No, it's not public. Well, can he do what he wants to do?
Right. I mean, there's a lot of questions there. I see where you're going. I think legally, there's a lot of questions there.
That's right.
Uh, you know, what is the definition of private? What is the definition of public, uh, in terms of what the roads are? And then how does that bylaw apply? We obviously don't have anything on the books that applies to, uh, conditions for a private road.
Right. If he put a gate at the end with a little card.
Mm-hmm.
And made everybody on the road stick the card in the gate.
Mm-hmm.
Would he do what he wanted to do? How long is the road? How wide is the road? Does it have to conform? Because it's private. There's a gate there preventing non-residents from coming in.
But I think in order to get a building permit, you gotta meet that. Five-point-three-point-two-one says that each hammerhead lot must have a minimum of fifty feet of frontage on, uh, an accepted town road.
Right.
So whether it's private or public, I, I don't think it matters. It just needs to be an accepted town road.
It's not accepted if it's not, if it's not accepted, which it is not.
Right, so.
It's not, so how can you apply that law? That rule? How can you apply that? That's why I think the gavel has to come down on.
I, I think you need to put an accepted town road in that area so that something can be built.
Not gonna happen.
But I think that, that under the rule, it seems to be an obstacle to building.
Agree.
I, I'm agreeing that, yes, I would agree with you. There's an obstacle to that. Okay, but now why are we making him conform to that zoning bylaw if it's private property?
The road is his.
And the neighbors.
Caleb, you're saying no, please.
The road is not his. I mean, he has access to pass on the road, but so does everybody else that lives there. I believe the intent of the bylaw was written to protect the town and its, and, and the services that are gonna have, are gonna be required to pass on that road and get to this house. Um, I would just say that yesterday's mistakes don't, shouldn't be continued just because they were made.
This is why professional developers are asked to, for the most part, develop the road and then throw down the houses.
Right.
So that way there is compliance in advance of the construction.
Yeah.
So maybe in the laws and in the past, but we're not looking to open the door to.
If he had used the tailings that are at the beginning of that road and just put him down and ran his bulldozer over him, he'd have all the fifty feet of frontage.
But not on an accepted town road.
So that's, if that's the problem, then none of those houses should be there? Or they should all be allowed to be there?
They, they would not be allowed to.
Hammerhead, hammerhead bylaw.
His lot, right, his one lot though, it doesn't have a hammerhead to it.
There's no sense in talking about any amount of frontage then, right?
But there's already been two put on there after the fact too.
Right.
I mean, just recently, I mean, we're still looking.
But they have fifty feet of frontage.
Exactly.
How did they get them?
Yes.
Right.
I'm not aware of any other, I forget any lots that I've looked at.
So we're not, we're not talking about anything about, except allowing that twenty feet.
Right, exactly.
Correct.
We're always talking about.
Is that not efficient? I mean, my.
Fifty feet is what they require.
It's required, right.
Right.
Exactly.
So the variance is for us to decide whether twenty feet is enough.
Do we wanna give them the variance for twenty feet?
But in our reality, I would be using the forty feet. I mean, I'm gonna use that forty feet. It, it is my, it is my land.
Yeah.
I'm not going to, you know, really, in our reality, I'm not gonna use this twenty.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just gonna pull right in.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and have it so that I have access to it. Cause I can drive right on there. Those, it would be different, folks, if I, if I was driving on somebody else's land. I have no intention on driving anyone else's land. I have forty feet over here and I do have the twenty. And it, and, and in my book, on the private road and the, the, the design of this, it doesn't hurt no one.
Mm-hmm.
It does have access to it.
Don't ask, don't tell.
You know, we all know the requirements of being the, the standards of variance.
I do have one more question. Could the property, the new property, like, property line be drawn such that your lot has closer to fifty feet and the new lot for your daughter has fifty or more feet?
Good question. And I thought of that too. I went to the engineer. He said, Ray, if they want the fifty feet, we'll cut it off out of the hundred, the two hundred, whatever feet you have on your frontage. But now are we stealing from Peter to pay Paul? Now this front, cause I own this one here too. So we'll give this lot fifty feet. But this lot over here becomes, the road frontage requirement is a hundred and eighty feet.
Right, that's what you have on your house.
So we'll have a hundred and fifty feet. And this lot right here will have exactly what it needs.
I don't think you can do that either.
Right.
Because you need the one eighty.
One is good and one is bad. One is good, is, but, 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 but in our reality, is it bad? I mean.
But what, it costs you legal fees to, to have it cut out and registered?
No. And, and, and the thing is, is this, is, is it's, it's gonna cost the same as, um, but again, have we ever approved a hundred, a hundred and fifty-foot lot frontage? On, regardless if it's a town road or a, an accepted road? I've, 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 I've watched TV, I've seen it happen. Not that I'm, um, uh, uh, saying that it doesn't happen, or it can happen. But again, I did say it. And all, alls I'm asking is that, is this twenty feet acceptable to, to the members?
Mm-hmm.
To say, yes, um, you can put a house here and you do have the variance. Um, it's not so much that I can't get to it, folks, cause I can. And I'm not hurting anybody and I'm not, and I, and I don't have to get, um, uh, uh, much in expenses to really make this happen.
If I might, Caleb, if I have a road a hundred fif- hundred feet long, I didn't find it funny.
You're hypothetical though.
That's right.
Okay.
But real world, real world hypothetical, how's that?
Hundred feet, private or public?
Neither. A road.
But that, the whole point is, is it private or public? So that, you can't use that example.
Let's make it this road. Let's make it this road. And the road stops. Where it stops, okay, is that not considered frontage for somebody?
The end of the road cannot be counted as frontage.
The what? The end of a road?
Right. Right, we're buying earlier called the cap and the case law is that case there.
Right.
And there might be another workable solution here, and that would be for Mr. Bonneville, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, to pick up thirty feet of frontage on the opposite side of the street and add that to the lot. So you'd be buying thirty feet from a neighbor. Uh, it appears to me that that neighbor has three hundred or so feet of frontage. Um, so you might be able to get in compliance with, with the cooperation of a friendly neighbor.
Frontage has to be continuous.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't.
It's not contiguous.
But would it, it wouldn't be contiguous if it's on both sides?
No.
If there's nothing, okay?
So I, I kinda see this as an impasse here. Um, and I don't want to close the door on this gentleman, so I'm gonna tell you why. I see this really large, positive land that he's passionate about keeping in its natural state. Um, I see the issue with the non-conforming, uh, the unaccepted town road, hammerhead lot. My proposal is to, um, consider a continuance until next month. Um, give this gentleman an opportunity to try to explore other options. Uh, again, possibility of, as one member stated, you might be able to modify that road and then make people happy and just come back and you may not even need the variance at this point.
Hmm.
Um, and I, cause I don't wanna close the door on you. I, I really, I'm passionate about maintaining wooded lands in Auburn also.
Sure.
I, I kinda see this as, you know, a certain circumstance where the bylaw doesn't meet the overall need. All right? So that's how I see it. Um, so, and again, this is just a suggestion. Other members of the board, please chime in. I wanna hear what you, what you think.
I, I agree with you if I might ask one more question. If, if there was not a question of the twenty feet versus the fifty feet, let's say that, uh, Mr. Bonneville had the fifty feet. And he was still looking for a special permit to build a hammer, on a hammerhead law. Cause he'd only had fifty feet of frontage.
Mm-hmm.
Would we be here? Because it's still not a town-accepted road. We'd still be here?
No, I don't think so, would you?
Yes, even if he had fifty feet, he doesn't have fifty feet.
It has to be on a town-accepted road.
Right.
For the existing houses, grandfathered, is that right?
I don't, I'm not aware of any hammerhead lots on the street. There may be.
Yeah, this one right here. My brother-in-law owns it. And it's a, it's, it's almost two hundred feet long.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's the point, he's two hundred feet long.
No, he only has fifty.
Right there. See, if he had the right frontage.
There's one there, and then there's one over here. There's two, there's two of them on that street.
But he has fifty feet in the lot.
That's it, yes, so, um.
That doesn't enter into it, cause it's not a town-accepted road. It's like every which way, in my head, every which way I turn.
I've seen.
Because that developer never did the paving that he was supposed to do.
Right.
But again, that's, like I said, this is, we've run into these issues in the past. I've been on the board for quite a few years now. And, um, the standards that were accepted much way before Caleb and the other board members and the other members of the Department of Special Services were here, were different. Um, it was just because that was the nature of the town then.
Mm-hmm.
So we've run into a lot of circumstances over the years that we've had to make a lot of corrections on things that have taken place in the past. So again, this is where we all have good points. I agree with the gentleman. Caleb also has a good point that, you know, old wrongs doesn't necessarily mean we continue with old wrongs. Um, and then I see Mr. Chikola's point of saying that, you know, it's not an accepted road, so therefore he can do what he wants. I think we have, um, three or four things to weed through, and I don't think we'll be able to resolve that tonight.
All right, I agree.
You know, and that's where I'd like to do the continuance, you the opportunity to continue to explore and us to give us some time to actually do some research on it as well.
Okay, to the chair and members, there is another way where it can be affordable. And it was like almost what he said. Don't make me pave the road from all the way from Stafford Street to my house.
Sure.
Let me pave it from where I need to go to where I need to be. And would that, oh, Caleb, that would still have to be.
Yeah, I don't accept roads, that would be, that would be Bill Coyle's calling.
Yeah, I think that's where you'd have to talk, and again, you can, you're more than welcome to contact the town engineer.
Well, I did, I did, I did, I did talk to Bill. Um, he said, we'll talk about it and we'll discuss it. He said that he would like a turnaround right here. I would, it would be an easement to the town.
Mm-hmm.
And that's something that I'm going to look for.
You're at a perfect spot for it.
At the next meeting. But I have to go through you first, I can't even talk to him. You guys are where the dollar starts. And you guys can be where the dollar stops. I, I'm dead, I can't go nowhere. I can't go nowhere.
If we continue it, that's not true, because I would have to have, if you just had the town engineer write a letter saying, you know, it was on Town Letterhead, explaining your conversation, and I'm sure Mr. Coyle, he's, he's very eloquent, he could write a very clear letter.
Sure.
That says, this is what I would find acceptable. And submit it to the board. Then we can make that decision. But, you know, just because we've had conversations that I'm not party to.
Sure.
I can't accept that information.
Understood.
It's hearsay in the court of law, it's hearsay at this table.
Yes.
And through the chair, you need, if you're gonna do an easement, you need everyone on the street to agree to that. And through the chair, you need, if you're gonna do an easement, you need everyone on the street to agree to that. You can't just give an easement to the town. Every neighbor would have to.
And it sounds to me like you wouldn't have a problem getting that. So I think if you could do that, and then we could, we could get you on the meeting schedule for next month. Okay. I think it's gonna, again, I'm trying to leave the options open to you. Sure. Because if we vote right now, I personally don't think it would pass, and I think we'd be dead in the water. Okay. And I don't want to see that happen to you. I can tell that you're passionate, I can tell you're passionate about the land. I can see that you enjoy the town. And I appreciate everybody's time and effort putting into this. So that's why I think if we consider the continuation till next month, waive all fees, all that kind of stuff, you know, and then we can see what you end up with your further export. So as it stands, you just have to go talk to the co-division. Go talk to Bill? You can if you'd like. I can't suggest that you do that, but I think that's probably one avenue, if that's where you wanted to go. You could also look at the person that designed those plans for you and see if there's another resolution that they may know of. So yeah, come, bring something back that we can hang our hat on. Okay. You know, that's really what I need. Okay. And I'm sure that's how the members of the board feels as well. So could you request a continuation for us, just for the formality purposes? Yeah, sure. Can we have a continuance? Yes. So do I have the, the, request a continuance? The motion on the, is...
Motion to accept the continuance.
Second?
All in favor? All right, okay. So this is what we're gonna do, continue to the May meeting, and the actual next meeting, I believe, is, what, May eighteenth?
Sixteenth.
May sixteenth.
Caleb?
Sixteenth.
Is all of that, is all of that road that currently exists, is it all in Auburn?
No, first, a hundred feet or so, or it's left.
Hundred, a hundred and eighty-five feet is in Leicester.
So the whole stretch of Sunset is not accepted?
Exactly. Right, even, even the ones in Leicester, even the one in Leicester. So, thanks, Caleb.
Here's not a... Just get tired of it.
It does.
Yeah, this is one of those onions we've talked about in the past. You keep peeling layers off, and it keeps getting a little more complex. That onion is getting to the core right here. Yeah, and we, like I said, there won't be, there won't be one, but, you know, to the chair too, and members, it does, it does, it does something to you when you know that it's already been done. Sure. The rules have been there. We're not, we're not, we're not saying that a rule came in two thousand and nine, and we're now in two thousand and nineteen, and we're subjecting to manipulate that law. Right. This law has been in since nineteen seventy-two. It has. Seventy-one, somewhere around there. So considering all the, all the, all the board members, and to the chair, there was this member, this board was here the day that they allowed the other hammerhead lots in. So that's why I said, if it said that, and this is what the engineer did say, exactly what you said. You know, Ray, if it was wrong, is it wrong to do it today? And it will never happen again? Is this the last time you're gonna say you're sorry? Anyone on this street?
It didn't go through.
I'm saying I'm sorry, and I'm gonna be able to build, and that's the end of it. So again, that's why we're trying to help you, we're trying to work with you. And I appreciate it, guys. And, you know, again, old wrongs don't mean we have to continue with those. We have to, that's one of the reasons we straightened it out. But also, keep in mind that I am also on the, I'm a member of the zoning board review committee in town. We've been working for a little over a year now to get things done. So this is something that I'll bring up to the board, I'll get it on the docket, we'll try to get that straightened out. It probably won't happen for quite a while, and it certainly won't affect your case. Right. But now that we find these holes in those bylaws, is when we take note and we're gonna do something to correct it. Do something. This is the other thing too, is I can get an okay. I don't even have to come back here if I decide to develop all this. Right. That's what's, that's what's crazy. Right, I know that. In other words, I can put...
It's easier to be a millionaire than help your kids.
Yeah, you can put twelve lot, you can put twelve of those on there, not one. It's all over. I know. It's all over. And Bill said, you know, something, I don't know why you only want to put one there anyway. You know, it's, 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 you know, it is a large parcel. And I had to say to him, listen, if you've ever been up there, just take a walk through the woods, and you'll see why. I mean, I don't hear nothing. Right. You know? I wish I had that option. A lot of people do, you know, and again, I am in heaven, you know? So I definitely look forward to seeing you next month. Hopefully we can find some kind of resolution for you. I know I'm gonna do some extensive research between now and the next meeting, and I hope you find some relief as well. If Bill, if Bill does go along with, you know, putting a little cul-de-sac there, putting a little bit of here, make it, but I want it, he said that he would want it like eighty feet or something, ninety feet. It would all have been on my property anyway, and it would, it would be, and I said, okay, no problem, I can do that. Yep. And him stating that, would that be sufficient? It would be. In my humble opinion, I'm not gonna speak to the other members of the board, because we all have an individual vote that is equal and balanced, but in my humble opinion, I would find that acceptable. And again, one of the other members, Mr. Jones, brought up the fact that it's getting safety equipment in there as well. Exactly. So I forbid something happened, you got a fire some night, you know, or somebody needs immediate medical care, and they get stuck in a rut, driving the ambulance up there, now it's worse. You know, I've seen situations like that happen in the past where, you know, we go from bad to worse really quick.
And we face that on one other vote.
Yeah, and we want to be able to take care of that too. Okay. So, but thank you very much for your time, sir. Thank you, guys. You have a great year next month. Yep, thank you. Okay, so we have...
Before you start, the next one?
Yep.
This is the last one that I need to recuse myself.
Okay. So just for the record...
So you'll have to bring one of them in.
Yes, well, they're all gonna be coming in now, so, yeah. Mr. Chacolo is going to, yes, you have the...
Right, where do I have to sign?
Does he need to sign anything for it to recuse? I don't think so, right?
No, we have things to sign before you leave the building.
Yeah, you can't, you gotta stay with us until the end of the meeting, is what they're saying. So you can sign some decision.
Do we have BTS?
All right. We don't get until yet.
So Mr. Chacolo is gonna recuse himself from the next hearing.
That's true.
So we're gonna be bringing up Mr. Jones as a full-voting member, just so you're aware. So it'll be the votes of the people remaining sitting at the table. Okay, so our seven fifteen PM applicant, which is a little overdue. Base date performance owners Tim LaValle and Scott Flavin requesting a special permit to extend the existing non-performing use under section eight point two point three and three point two point seven point six of the urban zoning bylaws, as well as special permits under section three point two point six point eleven, to permit multiple business use in section three point two point six point three to permit light vehicular sales on property located at ninety-four South Hold Road, Auburn, Mass., map thirteen, parcel eighty-eight, as the applicant presents. Yes. So if you could approach and discuss what you want to do, so a motion to open the hearing.
Motion to open.
All in favor? Thank you.
I'm Tim.
This is Scott.
We're looking to be granted a special permit to coexist with the existing automotive business that's there.
Okay.
They're downsizing, and it is fortunate that a building was available.
And this is the Usher Auto Buy, oh, Usher Foreign Auto, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So are you aware of Usher Foreign Auto?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
So it's on the Worcester Robin line down the Curtis Street, and so to speak. It's been a foreign auto repair in the area since before I was born, probably, just so you know, so you give a little background on it. And do we have the abutters for this hearing? Okay, so we'll get to you in a little bit. All right, so gentlemen, if you want, just let us know what you want to do, and we'll discuss it from there.
We're basically just looking to do, you know, ATV, dirt bikes, motorcycles, snowmobiles, that type of repair, maybe a little bit of automotive stuff, just light use. A little bit of retail sales if we can, and that's the start. You know, eventually we'd like to get into maybe doing some sales that's down the road. So we want to improve the space, which we've been working with the building owner to clean up the spaces. Basically, a lot of it was just kind of sitting around, wasn't getting used. So they want to see the building used, and we've been looking for a place for over a year. So we know them, this kind of came up through Tim, and so we've kind of want to move forward and do everything right.
Okay. So I'd like to hear from the abutters. Any of the abutters would like to speak? Okay, so if you can just come up here, sit right here, if you can introduce yourself, give us your name and address, talk about your concerns. If you have any questions to them, please have to go through me to the chair, and we can direct it.
Glenn Cairns, ninety-two South Hold Road, Director Abutter. The business, I have no problem with a business being there. Multiple business use is, it was voted on in twenty-five years ago, ninety-four, and they did not want new and or used vehicles sold at that time in the special permit that was granted.
Okay.
They did not want multiple use at that time. The neighborhood has only gotten slightly larger, but larger. So I think it's overwhelming for that. As far as what was granted then was all appears to be done within the building so as to not impact noise, this, that, outside, which be a concern, especially with dirt bike four-wheelers, and especially with sales, snowmobiles, where you're testing them, where you're, you know, gonna have to repair, where do you test stuff, where an automotive business you have legally registered and on public codes. So there are concerns.
Okay. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna talk to all the abutters, and then we'll address those separately with them. So do you have anything else you want to add then? So it's the multi-business use, obviously the repairs of vehicles and test riding after repairs, the noise of the ATVs and motorcycles, those are your major concerns.
Those are major. I know as well, the original special permit said the remainder of the land was to remain residential.
Okay.
So other than the building and wherever the allotted area, so that's the way that was stated, like I said, twenty-five years ago. Things have only gotten busier in that area.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, let me go on with the other ones, and so anybody else that can speak? Again, sir, same thing, if you want to come up, introduce yourself, give us your name and address, go over your concerns.
Craig Boyle, ten Auburn Hill Road. So I'm in back of, Auburn Hill is parallel with South Hold.
Okay.
We're on the backside. So I have a few questions. Is this going to, is this going to displace any of the existing salvage cars that are on the lot?
Could you please speak up? We can't hear you.
Sorry.
Is this going to displace any of the existing cars, salvage cars, that are on the lot?
Can you give us an idea of a lot of salvage cars on that lot right now? I didn't, as a head count myself, but I mean...
I just saw a couple.
Yeah.
Just a couple? I mean, I can see it through, from my deck.
Right.
And I can tell you, just, I just took a picture.
Sure.
From my deck. Probably didn't do it service, but, so my concern, quite frankly, is that that the lot, the piece of land that is directly in back of my house is gonna turn into a salvage yard. And that right there, that truck and that tank shouldn't be there.
Uh, yeah, it looks like a white, is it a plastic water tank of some sort?
Some thought, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I think you referred to those right there.
Oh, actually, this is a better picture.
The holes down the sink.
In your street again, I'm sorry, through the chair. Your history address again?
Ten Auburn Hill Road.
Ten Auburn Hill, okay.
This is a truck and a tank.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
See, it's like a...
That looks like the plow truck.
Uh, yeah, right.
So is it just cars, or are there other types of vehicles out there?
I mean, you guys would know. There, I can see cars through the trees. And I know that, so, gentlemen...
There are actually way more than...
And if they're downsizing, what else is gonna happen? So the original, my memory from the ninety-four approval was that a vegetative barrier was supposed to be put up between our street and their street, which a mound of dirt was put up, but those cars are on the other side of the, of the mound.
How tall is the mound?
Twenty feet, maybe? So that's my, that's my main concern. I guess I came here with the assumption that, that they were used, they were looking for dual use. So I guess my question is, you know, what's gonna happen to what's already there? Is, you know, the sale's going to displace that and end up moving it in view of my property?
Okay. Again, we'll address those when I hear the rest of the abutters, we'll go through them one at the back.
Okay.
Anything else you want to add?
No, I think I'm...
Okay. Are there any other abutters that would like to speak on the matter?
Joseph Warren, I live at ninety-seven South Hold Road. And my only real concerns are hours of operation and what the sales will entail, what light vehicular sales will entail is, you know, if it's whatever license or permit you apply for, if it's, you know, six vehicles, eight vehicles, eighteen vehicles, or what does that entail too? Is there, you know, vehicles coming in and out, you know, it's just hours of operation that's, you know, really one of my concerns, maybe one of my main concerns.
We can make, if the permit was granted, that's a big if, but, you know, that's something we can put into conditions as well.
Yep. Okay.
All right, so that's on the list, we'll discuss in a minute. Anyone else want to come up and speak? Yes, ma'am.
I actually have a question.
Just again, introduce yourself and...
Sure. Liz Boyle, ten Auburn Hill Road. And so we, our backyard abuts the property that's where Usher's Farm, our repair was, or is. So we've lived in that property for about thirty-three years, and basically, our neighborhood has kind of stayed the same. It's a very quiet end of Auburn. We're right on the Worcester line. We kind of leave it the way it is. We don't, other than the Usher's R and R, probably don't have any other businesses there. It's a quiet neighborhood. It's, we're on a dead-end street, we like it there.
Yep.
When I hear that there's gonna be a business moving in that's gonna have, you know, ATVs and snowmobiles, I'm kind of concerned about the use. You know, is there gonna be a lot of noise generated? Is there gonna be a lot of noise? Are there gonna be people coming in and out? Access to that would be from South Hold, from Greenwood Street or from Curtis.
Right.
To my recollection, the upper end of Curtis has a lot of family homes, you know, small kids. So it's just mainly, my concern is maintaining the neighborhood the way it is.
Sure.
Yeah, it's a nice place to live. We've had someone come in recently to do some repairs on our house, and he said he grew up in Auburn, never knew that neighborhood was there, and was like really, really looking around, going, you got a great piece of property, you have a great neighborhood, it's nice and quiet.
Sure.
So that's my concern.
Okay. There's pretty much no traffic, right? Because nobody really uses the dirt-end part of the road, is that right?
For South Hold?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It does go through.
It goes all the way up to Curtis, but I don't know. And to my recollection, since we've moved into the neighborhood, there is one end of Curtis, and after, Curtis comes down from Upland and takes a curve to the left, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
So that stretch of the road that parallels, that goes down the hill into South Hold has had more houses built on it from what I recall.
It has.
But also, you can go up to the recreation complex, and you can take, we've walked it recently. You can walk from the recreation complex all through the back area there where it's undisturbed and it's all open land, and go all the way out. And you don't know, I mean, I don't know where I am in Auburn. But it is the upper end, the far end of Curtis beyond that.
Right.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you, thank you.
Keeping it...
We'll address each one of those.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so gentlemen, you heard the concerns. Oh, I'm sorry, you wanted to continue, please go ahead. Same thing, come up, introduce yourself, give us your name and address.
Hi, Ed Usher. We own the property, my mother does. And the reason why, that truck had a couple of things that needed to be cleaned up, was my father was passed away a year ago. And he used to get pissed off when you, you know, you tried to get rid of this stuff. That's basically, you know, we built the truck that's up in the back field. It shouldn't be there. And I'll remove it. The other thing, the other tank was, I was gonna use it to water in the garden. I used to grow corn down below. And I can move all that, and I can even extend the buffer up behind it. But we want to, in front of the business, we want to put a fence up again. We had the fence, it rotted down, and my brother-in-law left the business and pursued other avenues, what he wanted to do. And we've been doing it a little bit here and there, you know? I've just been, basically, the reason why that stuff is up there is because I keep my father happy.
Sure.
Okay? And it can be gone, I can move it, and I want to eventually extend the buffer on the back of it, the pilot back there. I want to extend that buffer down. And the buffer originally, because I was at the meeting, originally the buffer was just the trees that were between there. It was never said buffer that I put up dirt. But I had the chance to get some dirt, and I made a buffer just so the neighbors would be happy. You know, happy neighbor, that's, you know, and if they have a beef, just, you be calm. No problem. I mean, I have no problem with anybody else in the neighborhood, but there's one thing that is, is the defense in the front.
Okay.
And I will get to the buffer in the back.
Right. Are you doing any, are there currently repairs still going, taking place in the garage now?
I do stuff, but right now, we're in the middle of trying to get them in there if we can, you know? I was cleaning it out. It's a big building.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah. No, I mean, I do summer repairs, but I don't do a, I don't do a ton like my father used to. And these, you know... And these, you know, new blood, you know, new business, but they won't, not going to be much of a loud noise up there. It's, it won't work in that neighborhood. And, uh, that's my main concern too, I live there.
Right.
I mean, are you, any questions?
If, if I may.
Yes, please.
Uh, so the scaling back of the business is because you've gone from three people to one?
Yeah.
For your part of the business?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, no. You know, best of luck.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
He said his father passed and his brother-in-law left the business.
Yeah.
So now, now it's just him?
That was the only two that worked there ever.
Okay, and he says now he's part-time or the hobbyist in the space.
Caleb, do you have any history on the, um, permit in the past and what it may state as far as requirements or conditions?
The existing special permit?
Yes.
I'm not aware of the conditions, no. And I'm not aware of any complaints on the property as long as I'm around.
Sure. Okay. So let's go ahead and address that list we have. So the first one was, uh, where do you want to start? So obviously we have a complaint about, or not a complaint, a concern I should say, about cleaning up the lot, the buffer in the back to make them happy. Can you address those particular things first?
Yeah, we've been cleaning the space up for, what, almost two months now?
Yeah, they say...
And they've, they've moved a ton of stuff. There was some, uh, vehicles or whatever, I think they took them for a scrap and... So it's, it's getting cleaned up. I mean, even from our sake, you know, we spoke to them when we first looked at it, we kind of said, hey, it's kind of, I don't want to be bringing people in and having it look like a junkyard or anything like that. I mean, we're not interested in, in having anything like that, you know, and neither are they. Like he said, it's just, it took them a while to kind of, you know...
Okay. My father's been sick for a while.
Yeah.
One of those things.
So, you know, out of respect, they kind of, we're working with them and, um, moving stuff and cleaning stuff and, you know, we want it looking nice too. I mean, even all the way around the back of the building and everything else, we're not interested in, I'm not interested in looking at it. He's sick of looking at it too.
Yeah, sure.
You know what I mean? So we're helping, finally he has some help from us. So it kind of, it's a lot of work. I mean, he's done a ton of work up there within the last two months and, so we're in there helping, so it kind of motivates, you know? It's beneficial for both of us.
Sure.
So we definitely looking to clean it up, absolutely.
Okay. So let's talk about the new, um, we're talking about repairing new and used equipment, obviously.
Correct.
Off-road equipment primarily.
Uh, probably, most of it's motorcycles, to be honest.
So the street bikes?
Yes, motorcycles. You know, I mean, that's...
A good portion of our work is, you know, long-term projects, things that are brought to us on a trailer, going to be there for two to five months and then picked up. It's not, I don't want heavy traffic, I don't, you know, we do, um, I've been building custom motorcycles for, uh, years now. The last place I worked was Bond Storm Cycles and Spencer. In December, I was in a hot bike magazine, they, they flew up from New York and set up cameras, did a big write-up and stuff on a bike that I built.
Yep.
So I would prefer to work on two things all year. I don't want, I don't want a ton of traffic, you know, it's, it's more of the custom thing. As far as the off-road stuff, I mean, we're willing, whatever the neighbors, neighbors in the town wants, that's, you want to delegate ours, that's fine. Unless it has a mass registration, we don't test ride it, we just run it in the building and send it out. You know, whatever you guys want, us, we do.
Yeah, we're not going to be riding dirt bikes around and stuff like that.
Yeah. I'm not looking to have functions there. If we want to have some type of fundraiser, we'll get a rod, rent a rod and gun or a fishing game somewhere.
Yep.
It's going to be adult customers. You know, we're not going to allow someone to test ride something on...
Yeah, rip up and down the street.
We don't want to be responsible for something like that either, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Anything that's going to be ridden is going to be registered, insured, you know, just the same as motorcycle or car. We're not looking to be loud for anything, you know what I mean? We are going to respect the neighbors, you know what I mean? We both own homes, we both have neighbors and, you know, we're not looking to... I, I respect neighbors, you know what I mean? When they want to go out on their patio and have some peace and quiet, you know, I understand that.
Right. How long did you work at Bond Storm for?
I was there three years, prior to that, I was at Sheldon's.
What did you do at Sheldon's?
Uh, sales.
Okay. And you went to the mechanic side of it when you went to Bond Storm?
Yes, officially. But I've been wrenching on bikes since I was eight years old. I had a small shop in Lester, just kind of a, you know, a small garage I rented in like two thousand six, two thousand seven. But I'm also a licensed electrician and I was given a good offer to go back into the electrical field, so I did. But this is a passion that I keep going back to. And like, right now in my house, I can't keep up with the work, you know, being surrounded by my family, just everything else. So, um, we're really just looking for a garage to work on stuff and we don't want to disturb anybody. As far as the sales end, again, we're not looking to be a dealership, but, um, you know, if we get a couple of things for sale on Craigslist and something comes and makes us an offer and buy it, that's what, we just want to cover our asses and be legal, basically, you know?
So when you say sales, um, I'm not seeing, like, we're not, are we talking a Suzuki dealership where you're going to have twenty dirt bikes on the floor and a couple of...
No.
You know what I mean? I'm just trying to clear up for the neighbors here as well, too.
We're talking, uh, between the two of us, I mean, I have five dirt bikes, five Holly Snow, like, if I want to put up a sale sign on one of them or advertise it on Craigslist and have it at my shop, that's, we just want to be legit.
Yeah.
You know, do everything by the book. I'm not looking to be, you know, an Atticat dealer or, or like you said, a Suzuki dealer. That's not, uh, the route we're looking.
Yeah, we're not really looking to sell cars or anything like that.
So, um, retail sales as far as like, say aftermarket parts, oils, lubricants, anything like that? Are we talking that stuff?
Tires, uh, you know, some t-shirts, cats.
You know, we wouldn't have a large inventory of oil, spark plugs, common things, but we would have the catalogs where somebody can come in and buy whatever parts they needed.
Right. So if somebody wants to buy a custom set of rims, custom set of tanks, you're going to say, pick them out, I'll order them for you, we'll put them on.
Correct.
Yeah, if you want a paint job, we'll discuss that when they come in.
Right.
Right.
But we don't, uh, yeah, which would be subbed out to...
Yeah, paint we would send out if, if we were, it would be sent out to a body shop.
Yeah, right, right. I got you. Okay. Ma'am, did you make some notes about the other concerns that we had here too? Is, uh, hours of operation was another one?
Yeah.
Hours of operation, so I see if you're talking about like, say, so to speak, a custom motorcycle shop, it's more necessarily, I think, if I may, sir, um, the hours of operation would be more concerning about the retail sales and the people who come in and going as, as customers? I think that's what you're looking at, right? Okay, so, I mean, it's like, okay, so I have friends that have a welding shop out in Oxford and they work from sometimes seven in the morning until midnight, but the doors are shut and they don't bother anybody. Nobody hears them, they're got their helmet on and they're doing their thing. I think this gentleman's more concerned with if you would have a large inventory of used equipment around and you had customers coming in and out from, you know, nine AM to nine PM, Sunday night type of thing.
Yeah.
You know?
It would be a normal business hour, whatever is designated.
Yep.
And I don't see a lot of people, you know, somebody will come and drop some stuff off when it's done, they come and pick it up. We do want to, you know, we'll go and pick stuff up for our customers.
Yeah.
Say they have a motorcycle that doesn't run, we have an enclosed trailer, go pick it up, put it in there, you know, get it running and then deliver it.
So I worked at Lucky Cycles for quite a while and that's why I'm, I'm picturing what you guys are trying to do. I know Lucky very well. Haven't seen him for a little while, but I helped build the shop. And, um, I'm certainly not going to say either way when it goes on, but I understand what you're looking to do because he did the very same thing out of a two-car garage in Oxford. So, um, I really want to address the neighbors again, now that you've heard these things. Are you feeling better about what is going on? You having a little bit of knowledge with it? Or has, has anything else come up since you've had this conversation that you'd like to discuss?
Uh, as far as sales, I mean, you're talking tires and this and that, that's just normal parts that you would do to repair stuff. That's not...
Right.
That's not light vehicle sales, like dirt bikes, this and that.
Right. And normally, so I'll give you an example...
Hours of operation?
Yeah.
Is it normal business hours, eight to five? Is it Saturdays, Sundays? You know, what are the hours of operation?
So, just to give you an example, when I was a kid riding dirt bikes, if I had a flat tire, wrecked a tire, I would go out on the street, I would buy my new tire, bring it home, put it on. I would chew my rim up with screwdrivers and make a mess. When you have a fifteen hundred dollar rim now, you don't do that. You go in there with the flat tire, you say, please take care of this rim for me, put the nice new tire on it and they put the whole thing, you know, they do the whole swap.
I worked at Usher's Farm Auto for thirty-five years.
Oh, well, then I have to tell you then, okay. That's something else I didn't know. So you get the idea, so...
I know exactly what, I just want to see what's going on. Like I said, multiple business use, I'm not good with, single business use, I have no problem. How many doors are we going to open? And, you know, if you include light vehicular sales, where does that end? How many...
Right. So, okay...
I'm, I'm not seeing a full blown shop. Are we going to have, you know, ten or fifteen bikes? Usher's was limited to a, a number of cars for their license original. Where, where does it go? Where does it end? I just want clarification as to business hours, um, you know, what's going on there? How much noise? Like I said, even cars, not very noisy. We find to the, inside the building, um, you know, for work spaces, stuff like that. So I just want to know...
Sure.
What's going on as far as the, uh...
So most everything will be stored indoors anyway, you're not going to leave...
Well, you're not leaving.
No.
Right, I'm not, I'm not saying... Working on vehicles, stuff like that. Where are you letting them running? Saturday morning at nine o'clock, I heard a, what they refer to as a side-by-side four-stroke being unloaded out of a trailer up there.
What time was that again?
Nine o'clock, Saturday morning. It's not like, not early, but, you know, like I said, I could hear it inside my house, I know exactly what it is.
So again, you hear the concerns here. If we brought this to a vote this evening, it would be, I'm going to go around the whole one too, but, um, you know, obviously ninety-nine point nine percent of the work is going to be inside. We're going to maintain certainly a lot of respect for noise. You know, Big V Twins make a hell of a lot of noise, they can rattle houses, three houses down. So let me go around, so we've addressed some of that neighbor's concerns. Mr. Cussy, what do you have?
I just, uh, the fact that nothing's going to be left outside is huge because nobody wants to look at it. Sound, obviously.
Yep.
You guys are probably going to want to work on the weekends.
Well, I mean, I...
Since you have jobs.
Ideally, I would operate, you know, Tuesday through Saturday. Maybe Tuesday through Friday, ten to six, Saturday, ten to four.
Sunday left alone?
Sunday, Monday left alone. But again, I don't, even if Glenn wants to make our hours with us, I'm completely...
Whatever we need to make hours, I just like, make sure it's reasonable.
Sure.
A lot of activity on Saturdays, Sundays when you're around, not really thrilled with, but...
Yeah, I think one day...
As far as it's workable there, um, as far as hours, I mean, as far as, like I said, multiple business, are we keeping, what's it going to open up for having car repair and motorcycle repair?
Are we talking car repair as well?
I don't know. They said they want to keep both. We have a, I have a...
I would like to keep...
We have a, a non-conforming use already.
Right.
I don't know if there's anyone that's called...
Yeah, pre-existing non-conforming.
Anything of the, of the non-conforming use permit of previous?
Well, that's what I asked the building inspector, he's not aware of any of those conditions.
I know, I have a lot of stuff right here, but...
Okay.
So what do you, Usher, you're going to be a one-man operation there?
Yeah, yeah, I don't do it all the time, but I just want to keep the license open. I mean, it originally was a construction building. The building fall out of the sky, it was there before they put zoning laws up. And, uh, it's a commercial building and, uh...
They had changed it from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use.
Right.
The special permit was to change it from one to another. Now, are we going to allow another special permit on top of the existing special permit?
That's what they're asking us to do.
Yeah, I know. And that's what I said, I said, a business use is fine. Multiple business use, because now if Usher's Farm Auto is allowed to have twenty cars and then these, whatever you can do to them.
Can you say something?
Now where do we go from there?
Uh, one second. Ma'am, if you can just come up here and introduce yourself, name and address, please.
Thank you, I can go back to the seat.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Gail Usher. It was Usher's wife that passed away.
Very sorry, I lost...
Married fifty-two years. Was in Vietnam, that, and an honorable man. We need to make this building work. These two gentlemen approached me and I said, boy, I don't know about this at all. We do have Usher's Farm Auto permit, they granted us that. For my son to do little things. And we don't want to lose that. For one thing, they have a year's lease. And I don't know if they're going to renew it or keep it, do whatever, but I do not want to lose my lease. Glenn Cairns is my ex-brother-in-law. All right, so married to my daughter. So we're close, uh, being son-in-law, not brother-in-law, son-in-law.
Okay.
We live, you know, close, we see each other and talk to each other all the time. He knows that Big Ed, we'll call him Big Ed, he's been sick for a long, long time. He, um, was in Vietnam and you know what happens in Vietnam. I don't know what the fuss is because I went to a lawyer in town and we had, um, drawn up things and we told these two young men that they can't be loud noises. Usher's Farm Auto wouldn't allow it either. I live right across the street, so I'll be like the eagle on the street. I see everything that goes on. I think the building needs to come alive again. And my concern, which there, my granddaughter went to school with her daughter and, um, I wish she had come to me and said, okay, this, and we will take up care of all the messes. We will put up a fence, we will do everything. They have one year to prove themselves, all right? And the permit, you know, my permit goes on year after year, you have to pay for the permit. And anybody can come back and complain, you know? But I think we should give these young men a chance. It's their dream. And you know what? My husband's looking down on us and my key, my hus, my son wanted to clean up. He said, no, no, no. You know why? He thought Glenn would come back to Usher's Farm Auto. Glenn couldn't make it on his own and it takes two different people to be businessmen. Glenn's very smart, very intelligent and like I said, it's family. But now we all have to move on and we're still family. Glenn comes over, Eddie goes over and bugs him, they bug each other. They're two, like, two brothers and they'll be bugging us till, till whatever. This young man here has concern because he's got a young daughter. And the young daughter, she's starting to ride up and down the street on her bicycle, which the father rides with her all the time. And he watches over her like a hawk, her name is Molly. And you know what? We don't want to see anybody get hurt on the street or any loud noises or whatever. Because you know what? Everybody comes, they say, where did this neighborhood come from? It's beautiful down here. So we want to keep it as that. And I thank the board for listening to me and I hope I made some sense, but it's up to you, it's not up to me.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, um, if they got, they have a one-year lease, if they decide to leave, the special permit goes away.
Correct.
So, so if there was a permit granted, when they leave, if they do, you know, whenever they do, the permit goes away, it doesn't stay.
It doesn't stay with the building.
So, that's one thing.
The other thing is, taking into consideration that, you know, by late October, early November, that building pretty much shuts up, and they're inside, all went along, and nobody's riding anything up and down the street. So, for six months a year, it's, they'll be in there working, you won't even know they're there. So, I mean, that's another trade-off. I mean, it won't be cars constantly. You know, as far as I can remember, working at Jenkins Shell over on College Hill, when I was fourteen years old, fifteen years old, they all sent foreign cars that nobody could fix to Eddie Usher. And he was the only one that could figure out how to make those things run again, to tell you the truth. So, you know, as long as I can remember, that's been a garage. I see this more as a transition situation here, where the Uschers are gonna continue to do that, to keep the permit alive, but these gentlemen are probably slowly moving in, and if things go well, that business blooms, and then they continue to do what they're gonna do. I mean, it seems to me that a lot of the things have been addressed. Is there anything else, any concerns, that some of the neighbors may have, or?
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am?
So, the building is currently there, and the special permit that was given to the Uschers to have the garage there, is there any kind of stipulations about expansion of the business? So, say these guys come in, and I, I have young kids in their twenties, they wanna go out and do things too, love, I give them credit for doing this. But would say they're a huge success, and they've got a good deal there, and they wanna expand the business and the building. Are there any provisions for limiting the size of the building or the business set around?
Absolutely. So, this permit would only allow them to operate within the confines of the building right now, based on the conditions that we put in it. If they wanted to even consider something like an expansion in the future, it would all begin over again from ground zero, it would have nothing to do with the existing permits. As Mr. Cussy mentioned, because they have a one-year lease, we can put that condition on, this special permit expires when their lease expires, and they'll still have to come back in a year from now. When did you sign your lease?
A month.
Month?
Month ago?
Month ago? Yeah, close enough, month, I don't even... So, then next March, with their lease expires, they could come back in front of us again, and we can make sure that if Mrs. Usher is happy with what's going on, is she gonna continue that lease, and we can extend the permit. If not, we can just not grant the permit again.
Now, is that, is that permit only good for the year for their lease, or is it just a continuing if they renew?
So, we would, we could make that a condition, that they come back in front of us in March, and then, you know, just have another hearing on it and see how it's going. We could have you folks back in if you wanted, you can give us a feedback, and, you know, if you're all happy neighbors and things are going well, then, you know, we can continue with the permit. I wonder if still here for the members of the board, however, though, so, Ms. Roach?
So, I guess my biggest concern, I, I think cleaning up the building is great, I think you guys seem like you're really passionate about it, I think it will be great. My biggest issue is multiple business use. I think, I get it, I, I fully respect your husband, I think that's wonderful, but I, you don't have a thriving business there with Usher Auto Sales anymore, period. Whether you want to, great, you don't. So, I have a problem saying that it's okay to now slap another business on there without addressing the fact that the original business that has the permit isn't really operating, I know they're not using it, I understand the reasons that they wanna keep it, but you can't have your cake and eat it too. You wanna revitalize the property, rent it to these gentlemen, clean it up, I think that's great, but you also wanna keep in your back pocket that you might, I'm not, I'm not on board for that. I think there needs to be, one needs to go away. That's my personal opinion. I think the noise, I, I think they're gonna be inside, you know, I think there's been that sort of use in the neighborhood, I think that's fine, but if, if Usher's decides to ramp up, then these people are living next door to two very loud cars everywhere kind of businesses, and I, that's not something I heard all I can probably get over.
Okay, so, if I can just kind of address that, is, there's really nothing for these gentlemen to stop in, Mr. Usher could say that he hired them as mechanics, have them build motorcycles in that garage right now, and not change anything. They're coming in disclosing their intention, so, I mean, you know, that's really what could happen, they could just walk in there tomorrow and start renting.
Start working.
Put stuff on Craigslist, do whatever they wanna do, nobody's gonna know any different.
And work under his permit.
And work under his permit. But with them coming here, disclosing what their intentions are, letting us know, addressing the concerns of the neighbors, I think they're being a little bit more forward than they actually kinda have to be.
I think maybe it could be addressed by asking that this business occupy a minimum of fifty percent of the floor space of the property, too, to minimize the potential impact of Usher's as the second business.
Okay, I mean, I'm certainly open to ideas, I just, you know, what if, so what's stopping them from having three nephews come back, revive Usher's, and Usher is a full, full-time operational business with tons of work, like it was twenty-five years ago, and these guys are in there, then what do we tell the neighbors?
Well, first of all, thank you for just saying twenty-five years ago, I appreciate that. There's a little more than that, but I appreciate it. Well, the thing is, I honestly think, knowing the history of the building and the history of the business, Eddie Usher was the driving force behind it, you know? And he's unfortunately no longer with us. I see that as kind of like, you know, the family farm is starting to kinda slow down, and then the new people coming in to kinda take over a little bit and make things along. I can see the reason why you wanna keep that permit in your back pocket in case these guys don't work out, we're talking about a year lease, and that it still gives them an option in a year, what if, okay, it didn't work out, so you know what? We're gonna do Eddie Usher's auto detailing now, because that permit still exists, to kinda pay the taxes and keep that building alive.
So, through the chair, I have a question for Caleb. Can we limit the amount of vehicles that are on the property at, at a certain period of time? I'm just thinking of a way to sort of limit the original special permit, so that I can get over the hurdle of allowing multiple businesses.
I don't know that we could change the existing special permit. I think you can condition, you can condition the special permit.
The new one.
A new special permit.
But you can't, yeah.
Yeah, because they're not coming from the board for that permit, so we can't really talk about that.
Not a party.
I mean, an owner, but yeah, not a party to the special permit request.
And I can tell you the other thing, from working in garages off and on my entire life, if you've got cars on one side, motorcycles on the other, you're deliberately keeping them separate, because parks are expensive, cars and motorcycles alike are expensive, tools are incredibly expensive, you know, so if you're working on cars, you're staying over there, we're working on our bikes over here, we might meet for lunch, and we might have a coffee in the morning, but, you know, time is money.
I think that's it for me, then.
Any other comments, Megan? It's like they're, they're giving away half their space, there's no way they can even bring the, the business up to where it was, 'cause they just don't have the room.
They don't have the room.
Yeah, so that's my, just my thought of it.
And I kinda like the idea of having to come back in March again, let's see what the property looks like, let's see if it's cleaned up, let's see if the fence is happening, let's see a little green, you know, and I think it'll all kinda work out, in my humble opinion. Okay? So, do I have any other comments, concerns from the, from the butters, or from the board?
I, I have a question. So, nine point three point five point eight talks about employment and fiscal consequences. In your application, you didn't actually address that.
I wasn't sure what, what exactly, consequences for what, as far as?
Would there be a change, I, I assume it means, would there be a change in the level of employment at the property? Would it be limited to just the two of you, which would essentially supplant the two people who have left the business, the other business?
So, right now, we have no intentions of hiring anybody. If we need to hire somebody, that means we're doing good. And if we were to hire somebody, it's somebody to answer their phone and emails and work the schedule. Not, you know, not looking to hire master fabricators and that type of stuff. It'd be, it'd probably be my mother to sit behind a desk and help us out.
If you, if you were to hire somebody else who were wrenching, would that require you to find another space, or?
No, we could fit it all within that space. Right now, I currently own a contracting business, so that keeps me busy seven days a week, pretty much, so I'm hoping that, you know, we can operate with Tim, and there's still a lot of legwork we have to do as far as, you know, getting set up with vendors and tax IDs and all that stuff, so there's a lot of time just to get set up. Like, so we wanna be open and honest with you, and, you know, if we can get the permit, then Tim can start working a little bit, you know what I mean? And I can start working on some of the other stuff, so that we can get it to be a full, functioning business.
So, when you, when you come back in March, you're probably still looking at less than two full-time equivalents?
It really depends on how well it goes, you know what I mean? I'd love to transition from what I do, you know, and I hope that Tim's calling me and saying, yeah, I need you down here, you know what I mean? So, that would be nice, and then, if that works out, you know, if we could, if it makes sense, we would hire probably another mechanic.
I mean, I think that business can support the size of the building, I don't think it would be a big deal to have five or six mechanics probably working on our motorcycles, right? If you need to do? It's big enough.
No, as far as area, yeah, they're bigger.
So, what you're referring to in section nine is fiscal consequences would be to the town, is the town gonna absorb any costs as a result of that business being there? I've written so many special permit, I can tell you. Yeah, so, that's, you know, there's no impact on that at all, I would literally just write no impact if I was making that decision. So, I think, I would like to list the conditions before one of you decide if you wanna approve with an I. So, in my humble opinion, the conditions would be that this particular permit would expire at the end of the lease in March, that the lot has to be cleaned up to satisfy the neighbor requirements. Obviously, repairs would have to be done, all repairs and transactions within the building. We certainly do not want any hundred mile an hour test rides, you know what I'm saying? You know what I'm talking about? We would also like you to limit the access, keep it to Southhold Worcester End, and not going up to Curtis End. You know, keep it a one-way kinda drive if you can, even, you know, customers coming down from Curtis Street to Auburn, and they're bringing the trailer down there, and they're backing in, that's not gonna disturb anybody. But as far as somebody going up that road with a razor, or, you know, one of those, but we don't want them heading any in that direction at all, because we wanna maintain their peace. I wanna see the back of the building cleaned up, well, the whole area cleaned up.
Yeah, we want that.
We mentioned the fences, I'd like to see that type of buffer get cleaned up, I can see where that buffer has lost scrub, you know, there's something, maybe put something nice up, and again, I'm not trying to cost you money, but, you know, if there's something that you can put up where that will create a pretty solid buffer zone in the back, you know, doesn't have to necessarily be, you know, Abercrombie's or anything like that, but, you know, something nice that's gonna keep, make them happy, so when they go up on their deck, they're not gonna see all that stuff. And then hours of operation, I think it's gonna be standard business-type thing, so, you know, you do Monday through Friday, eight to five, you know, that's for public access. Obviously, if you're in there till ten o'clock, working quietly with the radio on, and nobody's bothering you, that's fine. And then maybe like a Saturday from like, what, nine to two? Again, that's for retail and open-to-the-public stuff, 'cause they can still be there all night Saturday, working on something nobody's gonna know. I mean, those...
Two or four, you could even go to four, I don't know, I mean...
Set four on Saturday?
Saturday's the day, you know, a guy, people get out of work and stuff.
That's true, they wanna get their stuff, so, yeah. Yeah, okay, so like a, like a ten to four on Saturday?
I think that's about it.
Yeah, same, ten to six.
Okay, I'm just making sure everybody's happy before we move forward, this is what I wanna discuss, I want, I want these people to leave knowing that we heard their concerns and we addressed them, and I want these guys to know that we appreciate the fact that they're coming forward and disclosing this business to us, so we're trying to get all the parties concerned here happy.
And then nothing on Sundays.
And, yeah, no work on Sunday, Mondays, at least no public work on Sunday, Mondays.
Yeah, we'll probably be in there often, but...
Yeah, I know how the garages work, you're gonna be there regardless.
Closed, closed.
Yeah, no big noise, doors closed, you know? I'm trying to make sure. I don't think we missed anything, right? So, those are the conditions?
Percentage of floor space?
And honestly, I, I agree with you with how is it enforceable, because if we're not walking in there on a day-to-day basis and see where they're parking cars and motorcycles, how are we gonna know? It's kind of unenforceable.
Yeah, I think that goes to that lease agreement.
So, are you talking about between the two businesses? I believe the portion that we're leasing is larger than, there's a wall that divides the garage base.
So, you're already at over half?
I would say, I believe I'm at half or better.
The garage enveloped three bays.
Right.
Is what was used for the actual repair.
Okay.
There are two others that are joined, and another one that is separated by a wall as well.
So, how many bays is this business?
There are six bays at the garage itself.
One and two will be the new three.
Usher's used three as after repair.
Right, okay.
And that's, I assume that's just three bays that they're using now.
Day one's huge.
Okay, so, those are my lottery list of conditions, that also go in addition to all of the other standard requirements for special permits that Caleb likes to hear Anything else?
Some drain oils, you're gonna have containment for all this?
I'm thinking that the business has already had that stuff for years, and, you know, they're gonna comply to that. You know, fortunately, a motorcycle's gonna have at most five gallons of gas, which they're not gonna get rid of, it's gonna have a couple of quarts of crankcase oil, it's gonna have three quarts of oil or filter. Maybe some shock oil.
And Caleb, you'll be inspecting this building? Do you go in when they're off?
No, not, not unless they're proposing any construction. We probably will pull a permit, we just wanna do some cosmetics, it's been kinda...
Oh, yeah, you're gonna...
First it up a little bit? Yeah. It needs to be cleaned, there's a couple of...
There's a signage, too, so just be aware of the zoning laws, signage.
Can we condition it for inspection?
We certainly can.
Or if he pulls a permit.
Yeah, we pull a permit, he's gonna, you know, it's light stuff that we wanna do, the rest of it's pretty existing, but there is some stuff that's in need of repair.
Well, I can tell you, Caleb is honestly probably the best I can have do that, super fair, he's gonna make sure that you go all compliant standards, you know? I'm more concerned that if something goes wrong, I'm gonna go knock on Mrs. Usher's door, and I'm gonna rat you out. She's gonna take care of you.
I'm a licensed contractor, I'm a licensed electrician, so...
Okay, so, with all those conditions that we met, or we spoke of, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Do I have a motion on the seven fifteen, long ago, application to extend the non-conforming use under section eight, two, three, three, two, seven, six, three, two, six point eleven, three, two, six point three, for the property located at ninety-four Southhold Road?
Motion approved? Second?
All in favor, Ms. Roach?
I'll go yes.
I will go yes?
Yes. Congratulations.
Good luck, gentlemen. Good luck to the rest of you, believe me, we are here, if something you don't like, I think, it seems to me these gentlemen are pretty approachable, but we'll see you all again in March, and let's see what's going on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If you guys, you know, if you guys wanna come chat or whatever, if we wanna clean up, too.
About our shared decisions. According to you.
Yes. So, do we exactly want this one over to Caleb?
I'm Joe, by the way. That's my dad. I'm Joe, by the way. Yeah, we're Scott and I. Nice to meet you.
All right, so this is a...
Can you just go over which...
Yep. Excuse me, guys.
Sir, can you guys just talk on, we gotta finish. Care if I keep it? I'm such a nerd. You know, really need to downtime.
Did you work so much to be real after low school, right? Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember, I knew after that. Yeah, yeah.
I lived around it more.
Yeah.
You lived very well, it was a, a great guy.
I'm like somebody just looking at you all the time. Got a few ball hole ones bouncing around.
Yeah.
I'm always...
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so, we have some business to take care of here. Certificate of Decision on Request for Withdrawal of Variance. Caleb, will you just bring up some speed on that, so I make sure we're signing? This is for the Washington Street property.
Yeah, the applicant requested a withdrawal of the application, so that he is permitted to submit a similar application in the future, he'll wanna record that.
Okay. Automotive thing with the lawyer?
This is the building expansion on Route Twenty for the heavy equipment right next to the gym, with all the construction equipment. Yeah, ATS. So, this is a request to withdraw.
Mr. Broder was the attorney, the representative.
Okay, Mr. Marin is not present, absent, you're absent, so I have Mr. Cussy, Mr.